Clock waits for no one.
Good evening and welcome to the September 11th, 2024 regular meeting of the Bangor School Committee. If you would all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you very much. And again, welcome, Dr. Robinson. Are there any adjustments to our agenda? We don't have any adjustments this evening. Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda, we do have our public comments and I will read our brief statement before we welcome any guest speakers. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or her staff will follow up with comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school committee policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do we have any public comments?
Is my mic working? Can you hear me? All right. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, and my name is Dawson Neville. I am a student here at Bangor High School. And I'm also a candidate for school committee this fall. About a year and a half ago, I spoke to this committee about security matters. I'm sure most of you have seen that as well. The time when we had a lockdown at the school that went a little awry, let's say, and well, what promised me to bring back security again was a mass shooting that we had in Georgia last week, where four people were killed and nine more injured. And I had a parent come and speak to me about a week ago and she said, well, it's hard for parents to get info about the lockdowns. Of course, you know, we make protocols and things public, but parents, as far as speaking to their students about safety, because the students do ask, like, Mom, Dad, what should I do when there's a lockdown? What do we do when there's a fire drill? And the parents may say, oh, I don't know. Or they might say something that's not in our protocol, just because, you know, lack of knowledge or they don't understand what our protocols are. It's kind of like a game of telephone. You can, you know, say one thing and then it gets changed from person to person. And this parent had an idea. She's like, why don't we have assemblies like we do, like the first day meetings that we have with our students? And what if we were to do that with parents as well? Give them the rundown of what happens when we have a lockdown drill. What happens if there's a shooter in our school? To get everybody on the same page about what's going on. And I thought, well, it's a good idea. And I'm not sure if we've ever thought of anything like that before. I think it could be a good idea, not forcing the school system to do it, but I strongly suggest maybe we find a way to do that. I know the schools individually, they have assemblies all the time, so it might be something that we can maybe work in, you know, when parents are available at home. Obviously, you can't do it during the school day. But I just figured I'd bring that thought up, especially since someone mentioned it to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Seeing no other speakers for this evening, we will move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. Great. So I do have an update on the first week of school. Everyone received my newsletter, I assume, which I'm hoping will go out a little bit more frequently at the start of the year, but then I intend to have that monthly, the Bangor Bulletin. The open houses across the district were very well attended. It was exciting to be able to see so many families come out that those two nights. The opening day with students went very well. I was able to attend all the schools and I'm happy to report, I know two students' names, well, three, we're counting Dawson. I have three students at the high school, four, and Sophia, because there were two others that I've seen since the first day of school and was able today at the UTC Center. Saw another student and I remembered her name and her face. So I'm working on that. That's exciting. But yeah, going around to all the schools and interacting with staff and students was a great way to start the year and the excitement from everyone was just inspirational, really. I formed a new district team with all, with representatives from all departments of BSD and we had our first meeting on Monday. So I'm excited to continue that meeting bi-weekly. Just before this meeting, we have the DOE piece and I thank all of you who were able to attend that. The Measure What Matters, taking a look at how do we reimagine schools? I had my administrative council meeting this morning and we discussed that this information that I will make sure we get back is really going to serve as a foundation to help to be, and be a catalyst for some of the initiatives and changes that we will look at moving forward. We're also one of three recipients of the PCHC's 2024 Dottie Woodward Community Service Award this year. So there will be a dinner and I understand that member O'Keer will be there to present the award, which is exciting, and that's on September 18th. Dinner. Our current enrollment, we have had an increase of 16 just compared to last September. And currently we're at 3,459. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. So thank you for that, Dr. Robinson. Next up, we have an update on capital improvement projects and our business, our Director of Business Services, Jerry Hammond, will provide that update.
So good evening. The list I prepared was not part of your packet. It was a handout at the meeting. Much longer to put together than I anticipated, so I apologize for that. I will not read you the list. I want to explain what's on the list. These are the major projects went over the summer by school, the description of the program or product and the vendors that are performing the work and the status. The status can be anywhere from complete to a punch list to finish in a future timeframe, but I wanted to briefly tell you that it includes indoor, indoor air quality projects continuing. We have two healthcare clinics in our middle schools going in. Numerous boiler projects, which will help air quality. Numerous playgrounds have been upgraded over the summer. Our stem rooms in this B wing, the high school is coming along nicely. It'll be finished probably by Halloween. We have numerous roof projects going on. We did an art room in the Dottie School and it looks amazing. And we also are doing several exterior wall projects, so, and the list goes on and on, but if you have any questions, please let me know. Give back to me. I can give you as much detail as you want. It's on quite a list, quite impressive to pull this off in one semester. This is the final summer hurrah of the COVID money, as you know. So this is probably the largest list you'll see for a while. Any questions?
Members, Ray?
Thanks for the updates. I don't have any specific questions about these and no specific questions for tonight, but I do think it would be worth a workshop at some point to kind of go over the facility plans. I know there was a study that predates, I think practically all of us around the table. And there's a lot of big questions in the community about our aging school buildings. There's budgetary concerns. People in this community really like their neighborhood schools, but what are our plans? What are we going to do? I think that's the type of big question topic that this board should have a say in and I, I think that sometimes plans languish on shelves and you know, nobody knows the community, I don't think, better than the people who are here in this room. We're chosen by the community to represent them, so I would like us to have a discussion about that and get some updates, especially with our new superintendent, to see where we're at, see if the plans make sense and kind of keep the community in the loop on what we're thinking about.
Thank you, Jerry. All right. So moving right along, we have a safety update and our community outreach and safety director, Ray Finney, will provide that update for us.
Thank you. So our presentation is off and running. So after the incident that happened last week in Georgia, I was asked to come in and talk to you a little bit about our safety protocols and what we have in place and answer some questions, should you have any. So as you are all aware, safety is our primary concern for our students in the Bangor School Department. We make sure that, you know, there are a lot of concerns when students walk into a school or whether their parents drop them off at the school at the beginning. We want to make sure that we have safe learning environments for all of our children. And emotional well-being impacts academic performance and we know that. Stress of concerns about school shootings and other types of violence really impact students throughout the day. So with that, we have emergency drills and trainings that we do on an ongoing basis. And many of our schools have started those trainings and those drills. And you'll probably hear from kids that there are fire drills that have been going on. Also lockdown drills have been taking place as well. There, these are mandated by the state. And so we have multiple types of drills that we do. We are required to have 10 fire drills, an evacuation drill, two lockdown drills, two secure drills, one hold drill, two bus evacuations drills, and one tabletop exercise each year per school. And so we keep track of those so that we're able to know what timeline we're on. And we try to plan them evenly throughout the school year so that it doesn't impact time in the classroom. We also, when we do these drills, make sure to do learning abilities and learning assessments with them. So we will make announcements over the intercom system saying, students, we will be doing a drill momentarily. Please listen to your teacher to talk about what instructions are important to you at this time. And then the teacher takes over from there. They'll explain what the expectations are to the kids, what type of message they will be listening to. And they walk through those pieces so that it's more comfortable for the children involved. In August of 2022, we implemented the standard response protocol from the I Love You Guys Foundation. And many people may have seen these five symbols around schools. If you've gone into a classroom, you can see them. They're also in the library behind us. There's also information on our website under the school safety section in regards to the different protocols that we have. These protocols created a common lexicon, a common language about what to expect when we have emergencies within our schools. And these are the five different protocols that we will use. Therefore, there's a parent piece on the website that talks about what to expect if you hear our school has had a hold or if our school has gone into a secure protocol. It will let you know if there's expectations of parents to actually go to the school and pick up children, if you'd be able to check your child out and what those, what potential things could have had happened to actually in the school to set those types of protocols off. To dive into that a little bit more, so in every classroom, this sheet is actually hung in every classroom in the school department. And those information, or that information is actually given to students and gone over with them to cut, to cover what the drills are. So there's instructions on here for students and there's instructions for staff. If they find themselves in a space, we go over these. So as a drill lockdown, it will actually read to them lockdown locks lights out of sight. And it will tell students what the protocols are for them to do. In our trainings at the school meetings that we have at the high school with our incoming classes of freshmen and sophomores and next junior and senior meetings, we actually go over videos that talk about what happens if you find yourself in a hallway. What happens if you find yourself in a classroom without a teacher? And so really giving our students the ability to make decisions on their own, they're young adults, older children. And so they have responsibilities and they can do a lot of things themselves, but it's giving them the power to do that and giving them the knowledge of what to do. With that comes training. So the training of teachers for the training of students through drills and signage. That signage has also been updated. We have multilingual learners in our schools. And we actually have these posters available in Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic in different areas where students frequent. So next time you enter schools, you may see those. Synthetics was something that we implemented in January of 2023. Synthetics for a quick update is a technology platform designed to enhance school safety through real-time communication. So all of our staff members from our food service employees to our principals and our administrators have a button that they are able to push that can call for help. This has been used in the Bangor School Department at this point in time about 100 times in the past year. Forty-four of those times were actually for drills, which is something that we use often. The other 60 times were for instances of when we needed help in a certain space. So those would be things such as medical issues. A student falls in the playground, hurts themselves, and a teacher or an ed tech needs help to deal with the situation. It could be crowd control. It could be that they need the school nurse. There's so many different options of what happens in those circumstances. It could be that there's a disruption in the hallway and the teacher needs help with crowd control at that point in time. It could be that there is a fight between two students. Whatever that's been, looking at the time reactions, most cases have actually been attended to within 30 seconds of that button push. And most instances are completed within two minutes, which drastically reduces the amount of time that it takes to get ahold of administrator or this crisis response team within schools. Hearing from staff members that I work with, they're really happy with, you know, the response rate of being able to push a button and knowing that you don't have to call someone and hope that they're in their office and answer the phone. It's an immediate response. That instant notification of school alerts and emergencies also goes district-wide. It's not just at the school level. So whether Dr. Robinson is here at the high school or she's downtown at her office, she will get notified as well. So the district admin also have that notification system to know what's going on in our schools. So if there's a phone call that happens at one of those offices, they're able to respond a little bit easier saying, I'm aware that incident happened. We're looking into the specifics and we'll get back to you. The staff alert has reduced response time for emergencies. And then the crisis alert is automatically integrated with local law enforcement. And we work very closely with the Bangor Police Department to do that. They are our first point of contact. But they also work with other law enforcement agencies, whether that be the sheriff's office, the state police, or the federal agencies that are located downtown at the federal building. So school safety best practices. With this, we collaborate with the Bangor Police Department and our city partners. And actually, this picture is a picture of two local officers that actually attended an open, I think it was a career day at Downey School. At one point in time, the male officer actually flies across the floor on a scooter. It's a great way to get kids' attention on how to recreate an accident. But he talked about the importance of seeing something and saying something. We highly encourage all of our students and staff members, if they see something that's out of character, out of place, to tell someone else about it, to make those those reports. But also, we collaborate with our other departments within the city based on safety and security protocols. Last year, I was part of a larger contingency of city departments to talk about reunification and what that looks like. If we needed to do a reunification process during a city concert at the waterfront, how would we evacuate the city? What resources do we have? They were very happy to see our protocols, that we had options for all of our schools, not just one, but multiple. And they looked and took that into consideration when looking at their plans as well. We also have continuous assessment of our protocols. I attend trainings at multiple locations and have had the opportunity to work with the Secret Service, the FBI, and the, it's the internet, police people. Can't remember their acronym off the top of my head at this point in time. But having those resources and the Fusion Center within the state of Maine has been invaluable to what we do. We've been able to learn and sometimes things change rather quickly, whether that be whether to cover a window or not in our protocols. Sometimes there's changes. We learn things unfortunately from situations that happen in other places. We learned things from the mass shooting that happened in Lewiston. We've already learned things from the shooting that happened in Georgia. And those are things that we can put in place and implement to protect our students and staff here. We've also made improvements of our protocols based on national best practices, which I just mentioned. So future planning, what do we plan on doing? We plan on, so next year, during our opening of school workshop, we plan on doing a little bit of training during our second day and really engaging the teachers and administrators within the buildings on that day, allowing them to have training simulations and practical exercises that will really enhance their knowledge of what to do within their building. Do you have any questions about safety?
Yes, please. Thank you so much for that concise review. I really do appreciate it. I, I wanted to start by sharing. I'm sure others have seen this in the news, but Synthetics is actually credited with stopping a lot of further death at Appalachia High School because Appalachia High School uses Synthetics. And so I applaud the members of that were on the school committee at that time to make this really big investment. It is proven to save lives and I'm really glad that our school department is using that. And, and thank you for that update on Synthetics. One quick question, two, I'm sorry, Ray. And I Love You Guys Foundation is, are those pieces, I know we talked a lot about young adults using it, but what does that look like at the elementary levels? Are those images used in our elementary schools? Is I Love You Guys Foundation in our elementary schools?
It is. And so those images in the elementary school are color-coded. So, and the lights that would actually be used with the Synthetics system are coordinated with those colors.
Okay.
So for example, if our school goes into a secure protocol, the Synthetics lights will flash blue, which is the same color as the code on the wall.
Okay.
They're very basic instructions for students and our teachers do go over those protocols with the students as well.
Thank you. Thank you. That was definitely a follow-up. I appreciate that. And lastly, I know that we talked a lot about pre-training, making sure that our students are prepared to hear this and prepare for the drills, know what's coming to sort of mitigate some of that stress and anxiety. Are there conversations that are, are there template conversations for after a drill that are being used? What does that look like?
So after a drill, I found that being in the schools when those happen, many of the principals will invite me to actually be present for the drill to make sure that the system works the way it's supposed to. The conversation afterwards is, that wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. The drill announcement is actually, it's a man's voice, very similar to my own, that goes on and actually reads the protocol from the wall. The drill actually says, this is a drill lockdown. In a real drill or in a real situation, you would hear the following message. And so it's very guiding in what that is. It's not an alarm like a fire alarm. I think students actually have more anxiety from the fire alarm because of the noise, how the flashing lights and the abruptness of that sound than they do from the other drills that we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members, Ray?
Thank you all. Thank you for this helpful report. As you were giving it and then the future planning piece, and maybe you're already talking about this, I I was thinking about weather-related dangers and it, it feels like we can't get through a fall now without one of these incredible windstorms that's just knocking trees down, power lines. And a lot of times the storm will happen during the day while the kids are at school and then there's the issue of kids walking home and I, I just know that that's been, there seems to be an uptick in that situation. Is that part of conversations going forward?
It is. And actually, that's a part of the conversation that I've had with the city, but also the county. We are seeing more of those late, late fall storms that in the past would have been a nor'easter with a couple of feet of snow on the ground and are not coming with snow. They're coming with warm tropical weather. And so they're happening at a time where there are no leaves on the trees, but they're causing major damage. So trees are being uprooted. The ground isn't frozen yet to eat them down. There's a lot of different things that we're looking at. And so we're looking as a city on what can we do to mitigate those? Whether it be trimming trees early, identifying trees that need to be removed. So working very closely with public works, but also looking at our own plans and working with the superintendent on what that safety piece is for kids. Driving around, I know the last time we had something that happened, it was in December, December 17. And our maintenance director drove around town and was like, we cannot be at school today. It's those eyes-on-the-ground pieces of really looking at what the school looks like and making sure that's safe for our kids. A lot of our kids walk to school and with downed power lines, it was one of those decisions of do we open or not?
Any other questions or comments? All right. With that, Ray, we thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignation for the 2024, 2025 school year. Randall Allen, as enrichment coordinator at James F. Dottie School.
Right. So we cruise right along. We're moving on to our business in action items and the first item there is approval of our minutes from the last meeting on August 21st.
Recommending approval of the draft minutes of the August 21st, 2024 regular school committee meeting.
Can I get a motion?
So second?
All in favor? Thank you. All right. Next up, we have personnel and nominations of a teacher.
I am recommending the following teacher nomination for the 2024, 2025 school year. This is a one-year teaching position. Jamie Coburn, grade five teacher at the Fairmount School.
Can I get a motion, please?
So, second?
I do have a question. I have no, I'm supportive of this and I thank you for all the hard work to get this position filled. I would just say if there's time-sensitive things that we're trying to get somebody in, I would be always happy to have a special meeting or have a quorum of people go sign something if we have to. I understand in this situation, maybe the person needed time to move themselves and it was fairly quick from the start of the year now to get somebody in. But if somebody had been like standing by waiting to start and all they were waiting for was a school committee meeting, I think we could accelerate it somehow, if possible.
There, there is a process that we can do. There's a a vote that can happen in June to provide me that autonomy, so we can look at that for next year, for the summer.
Would be great.
Yes, I've already spoken to, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor? One abstention?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, and next up, we have our extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending the approval of the following extra duty assignments for 2024-2025. Angela Domina, Dramatics Advisor at the James F. Dowdy School. Matthew Tipton, Mountain Bike and Trail Club at Bangor High School. Jasmine Carver, .5 Varsity Fall Cheering, the High School. Dan Considine, .25 IEP Coordinator at the High School. Stuart Greener, .5 IEP Coordinator at the High School. Kelly Hasselbrack, .25 IEP Coordinator at the High School. Brianna Saka, .75 IEP Coordinator at the Bangor High School. Rebecca Tower, .25 IEP Coordinator at the High School. Nicole Downing, IEP Coordinator at Williams S. Cohen School. Samuel Picard, IEP Coordinator at Williams S. Cohen School. Jacob Dutton, .25 IEP Coordinator at the Fairmount School. Cassandra Azavito, .75 IEP Coordinator at Fruit Street School. Melissa Bartholomew, .75 IEP Coordinator at Fruit Street. Amy Alamo, .75 Coordinator at Vine Street. Vanessa B., .25 IEP Coordinator at Vine. Laurie Hatch, .75 IEP Coordinator at Vine. Deirdre Hill, .25 IEP Coordinator at Vine. Jessica Lee, .25 IEP Coordinator at Down East. Kasha Robertson, .25 IEP Coordinator at Down East. Kristen Shury, .5 IEP Coordinator at Down East. Courtney Brudow, .5 IEP Coordinator at Abraham Lincoln. Christopher Jenkins, .5 IEP Coordinator at Abraham Lincoln. Charlene Southwick, .5 IEP Coordinator at Abraham Lincoln. Just a few more. Sarah York, .5 IEP Coordinator, Abraham Lincoln School. Gillian Cookson, .5 IEP Coordinator, Fourteenth Street School. Danielle Ford, .5 IEP Coordinator at Fourteenth Street. Pamela Fox, .55 IEP Coordinator, Mary Snow School. Tracy Reardon, .15 IEP Coordinator, Mary Snow. Anne Marie Roberts, .25 IEP Coordinator, Mary Snow. Heidi Robinson, .55 IEP Coordinator, Mary Snow. Cassie Saucier, .55 IEP Coordinator at Mary Snow.
Can I get a motion, please?
Some second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have second reading of revised policies, and if we could take them all together.
Sure. I'm recommending approval of the second reading of the revised policies. Revised Policy ACAB, Harassment Discrimination and Sexual Harassment of School Department Employees. Revised Policy ADA, School System Goals. New Policy ADAA, School System Commitment to Standards for Ethical and Responsible Behavior. Revised Policy ADF, Main Learning Results.
Motion?
So, move.
Second. All in favor? All right. All right, next up, we have donations, which this evening will be read by Member O'Carry.
Yes, to Abraham Lincoln School from the Charleston Church, 23 backpacks for students, and a total value of $460. To Down East School for Owens and Miller School Supplies to Support Students, having a total value of $300. To Down East School from the Air National Guard, School Supplies to Support Students, having a total dollar value of $300. To Fruit Street School from the Charleston Church, Backpacks for Students, having a total dollar value of $300. To Fairmount School from Subaru Loves Learning, an adopted classroom, six classroom supply kits, having a total value of $450. And to Fairmount School from Subaru Loves Learning, an adopted classroom, a cash donation to support classrooms, having a total value of $3,000. Thank you to all the generators.
We have one more. Should I read them one at a time? All right, and then there was one more. To the Fairmount School from the Charleston Church, 24 backpacks for students having a total dollar value of $600. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second. All in favor? With gratitude, thank you so much. I do not, we have no introduction items. All right, so next up, we have our committee updates, beginning with comments and questions from the committee. And I do have comments to share myself. So bear with me, I don't typically write out statements, but I have one this evening. I often tell my students not to engage in public reading, but here I am, just to make sure I get that one right. So I would like to take a moment and address a recent article in the Bangor Daily News that painted a picture of a disastrous first day for students at Fairmount School. While I understand there may have been some confusion and mis, confusion and communication missteps leading up to the start of the year, to make broad-sweeping generalizations that disparage an entire school is unfair and hurtful. While I have a deep respect for freedom of speech and freedom of the press, I also believe that with those comes responsibility, getting mindful of the impact of our words and actions on the greater community. The life of educators is not often glamorous, and as noted in another BBN article addressing the ongoing teacher shortage, it's not just the pay that drives people away from the field of education. In that article, the author calls for, quote, "changes from parents and community members to ensure teachers feel empowered to teach and aren't second-guessed to the point of choosing another career," end quote. The sentiment, as I see it, also applies to our administrators, staff, and support staff, and everyone else involved in keeping our schools running on a daily basis. So, all stories have at least two sides, and we should strive to paint the fullest picture that we can. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. No school department is, but our BSD team is working hard, often around the clock, to ensure that we can offer a robust, inclusive, and an enjoyable learning experience for all of our kids. Naturally, if there are concerns, let your administration know. If they go unaddressed, let us as your school committee know. That said, it's important to note that much of what we do is bound by confidentiality and legal timelines that keep us from being able to move as quickly as even we may like. So, please allow space for some extra patience and understanding as well. I can speak for my family alone when I say that our child had a phenomenal first day at Fairmount School and has been excited to return each and every day, which is a big deal for our household. We have a relatively resistant kiddo. So, I would like to offer a thanks to everyone at Fairmount and across the entire school district who has made the transition between schools rather seamless, and for all that you continue to do to support students and families throughout all of Bangor. So, thank you again. It's been a great first week in our household, and I appreciate you very much. So with that, any other comments, Member Biden?
Thank you very much, Member Jean-Joe. I fully agree with you in that it has been a wonderful start to the school year, and I applaud all of our administrators and staff that have worked so hard to make that happen. What I appreciate and wanted to comment on in your piece is that there is this, this interest, especially I think from our committee, to move faster than we would like. And I myself am very impatient, and I recognize that. But I also see that really good opportunity for us to evaluate what we can do as a school committee to be more thoughtful, more mindful, in how we develop an infrastructure that truly fosters open and transparent communication for our families, for our teachers. Even tonight, we've heard workshops, special meetings, you know, different votes. There's a lot of ways that we, as a committee, could address some of the things that we're seeing and reacting to in a very proactive way, and I'm excited about the ways that we can do that. And I am excited, thank you, Dr. Robinson, for your update about the district team leadership that you've developed. And I would love to hear more. Again, in my own personal goal to move as quickly as possible, recognizing the work that needs to be done and really empowering and testing our staff. Under your leadership, I want to recognize, acknowledge, and value that. So for that reason, I'm hoping that we can start with at least a monthly update from you in your report, Dr. Robinson, about that district team, what's happening in terms of addressing some of these common concerns that we hear, so that we, as a committee, can be better informed about if there are things that we want to do, directions that we want to take. It feels more collaborative, and we're based on what we're actually seeing from the ground level, and we're able to move forward with that in a really thoughtful and inclusive way. So, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. I can add that to my monthly report.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Member Stratt?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge the Junior ROTC did a wonderful job today with the September 11th memorial on the waterfront. It was quite well done, including with a lot of, I think, brand-new ROTC students just back for the year. They did a good job. The battalion commander, Eva Coombs, did a great job with her words, and it was a nice ceremony. I also wanted to note positively in the superintendent's report, the head count is up modestly for the Bangor School Department this year, which is terrific. It bucks some demographic trends, so we want people to choose Bangor, so it was good. And lastly, I want to say, nice job, Yimka, leading the meeting tonight. I'm comfortable with you, Yimka. This is, I'm setting up my next comment, because I'm about to become the least popular guy in this room. You did do a nice job with me. Proper rules of order are when the chair and the vice chair are not there, the members who are there choose the chair. And if, I wish I had thought of that, because I would happily nominate you. I don't have any issue with you doing it. But everybody knows I'm a governance and transparency guy, and if the chair and vice chair aren't there, it's the people who are there choose the chair. Otherwise, it creates the impression that there's non-transparency or a group within the group that's deciding. So, I didn't know the chair and the vice chair weren't going to be here until I walked in. So, again, it's hard to say that without being the skunk of the picnic, but I would email it later, but then people get mad that I email. So, I'm saying that. And I want to go back to what I said before, which you did a nice job leaving. But if this scenario comes up in the future, the beginning of the meeting, the group that's here chooses the chair.
Every opportunity to learn is a good opportunity, so had no idea that was a thing.
It's not for you to decide, but I reiterate, you did a nice job. Thanks.
Any other comments from the committee? All right, so no committee appointments yet. Any representative reports?
We have a really exciting update. I feel like I need a can with this thing. Tim and I were able to attend the very first UTC meeting in the new school year, which has just kicked off, obviously, at the end of August, like the majority of the other schools in the county. And we have some really exciting news to report from there, namely that their enrollment is also up to its highest level ever. And they're currently serving, you know, 700 students at that facility, which has actually tripled in size in the past 10 years. And they opened up three new off-site programs this year, and they wanted to draw a new program that opened up at Bangor High School, and the old maintenance department really being utilized as a space to have this CTE exploratory program. So if students are not going to the UTC facility, they're able to learn here and engage in some of the learning and activities and really essential hands-on experiences that happen at UTC. I'm thrilled that Bangor High School is offering this. I think it's a really critical need and really important. And so I thank you, the Bangor High School, and especially the facility staff to make that happen over the summer in such a short amount of time to get that classroom up and running. You know that it was a really big round of the clock effort, so kudos to that. But, another big thing, not but, and, we really want to important, highlight an important opportunity for us to be very engaged and informed citizens. As we move into the November election, there is going to be a bond measure for UTC. It's going to be Region 4 Southern Penobscot County Vocational Region. That's what UTC covers. It actually serves 37 towns, and I think like 19 districts. There's many, many schools, towns, rather, that send their students to UTC. And this is the grant that has been accessible for UTC to seek out funds for industry-standard equipment to modernize 18 out of the 23 programs at UTC. It's a huge opportunity. And this measure, like I said, is going to go to every single town that sends a student to UTC. So it's not just going to be on Bangor's ballot. But it's really important, and as citizens of Bangor, as community members, as engaged individuals, we just want to make sure that when people see, oh, my gosh, this bond measure, up to $1.8 million spending for UTC, I don't even know what UTC is, that it's actually an opportunity for that school to get very, very needed and very expensive equipment. And because this debt service on the bonds will be paid by the state of Maine, there will be no impact on local education taxes. So, it is an important opportunity for us to support and get excited about, and start talking about really all the great things that are happening at UTC and by extension here at Bangor High School.
Did I miss anything?
No.
It's a huge opportunity. Member Biden has all the details correct, as always. Get out there and support it, and it's really going to help kids at UTC in some big ways, if it happens.
It'll.
I expect, that's right.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other representatives' reports? All right, so next up, we have our student committee member updates.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back.
Welcome. I hope you guys all had a good summer. I just want to start off by saying cross-country football, field hockey, soccer, and golf are now all in full swing, as well as the many clubs available at the high schools, middle schools, all grade levels. We have a senior parent night Tuesday, September 17th, in Peak's Auditorium here at Bangor High School. I have dates, but I wanted to take a moment to wish everyone a good luck in the new school year.
Thank you very much. All right. So we're nearing the end here. Next on our agenda, we have our information items, that list of key, important dates. So, let's make sure I don't get these ones wrong. Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, we have our regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in the Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, is our reorganizational meeting at 11:00 AM, Council Chambers. Thursday, November 14th, 2024, a workshop, 5:00 PM here in Bangor High School Library. And Thursday, November 14th, 2024, our regular meeting here at 7:00 PM in the Bangor High School Library. Final call for questions, comments, or anything from the committee? Member Stratt?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I want to quickly go back to the BBN article, just on one point. I just want to make one point on that. And it's related to the teacher shortage piece. I want to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for our substitute teachers. You know, full-time classroom teachers, for many, many reasons, have to take leaves, can't start the school year for different reasons, and we really rely on those substitute teachers. And they are excellent, and we do greatly appreciate as a system the patience of our community when we do have to lean on and rely on those substitute teachers. So I did want to mention that. Thanks.
A great point, and absolutely there, an asset we couldn't do without, right, and keep things going. Member O'Carry?
I want to echo what everyone said. Usually, I nod vigorously when people are speaking, thus understanding that some people might not visually see me. I think it's important to acknowledge my support for what you said about the article. Members, Greg, what you said about not only the construction projects, and just making that a more regular conversation, as well as what Member Biden said. I just think it's important to acknowledge that the school committee as a whole has the students' interests at heart first and foremost, and that's why we all ran. And I really appreciate all the work that all of the staff, from top to bottom, do every single day in this district. I mean, it moves me to tears to think about all the work and the lack of appreciation that you guys face on a daily basis, and I can't say it enough. But oftentimes, I'm like, well, it's running late. I don't want to say anything, because I agree. But I'm going to take the opportunity now to say thank you to everyone who's listening, who works with, in and for the Bangor School.
Thank you so much. All right, love. Hi, Jocelyn Katie.
Thank you. Excuse me. I apologize for talking over.
Excuse me, I apologize for talking over you. I just, I um, feel a kinship to Sophia uh, because we started at the exact same time and I am just really happy to have you back and I know that your senior year is very stressful. I don't think I recognize what this role took last year when Luke was doing it. And to see you return with a smile and great updates about all of the schools is really appreciated and um, especially with all you have going on. So I'm excited about this year for you and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, I love ending on a positive note. So we got anything? So, can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Alright, thank you everyone for being here. We'll see you again soon.